...and to the Republic for which it stands, for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call it here? Here? Here. And Christian McIntyre is on the phone call. He will join us. He's off with the Board of Natural Resources. They're having a meeting. I'm here if he's joining by phone. He'll join us. Request for modifications to the agenda.
We do have just the one that occurred yesterday in work session that we wanted to postpone indefinitely. Item 4E, the notice of hearing.
Move to approve the modified agenda. It's moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
carries. Public comment for agenda items. Just remember the public wishing may comment on agenda items only. We do have the public hearing on the budget at 10:30.
Come on up. State your name and address and the item.
Morning, Commissioners. That's the one field box 1-1, Calum Bay. Item 2 for agenda item 5A outside of, let me see if I can just write, outside of the hearing. Keep it all straight. Oh, not looking. Actually, 5A. So this is, if I understand correct, a list of a resolution to adopt a construction program area for 2016. And in approving the tip previous to this, I did testify at a public hearing my concerns with the tip, which I did not see get addressed in the tip. I have a concern with this construction program going forward. First off, if I look through the list that's being approved today, really don't see a lot of activity that directly impacts the mass majority in District 3. So that's my comment to you as you address 5A today. I'd like to view consideration be given to the tip. Does it really represent all the interest in this county? Or is it being mulling to a construction project that doesn't meet all the needs of the people on their basis? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to make comment on agenda items? Yep. Come on up. State your name and address.
My name is Randy Terry. Address 233 Riverside Road in Squim. I'm not exactly sure which line item this was addressed in the agenda, but I'm under the impression that there's some road department funding that's included in the agenda items? Or should I wait on this today or this later?
What questions? Do you have any question?
Okay. Specific questions? If I may, is there an increase in training budget for the roads department employees? I don't need answers for these specifically. It would probably take too much time, but they should be asked of somebody. If Ross wants to answer, you may. How many traffic control supervisors are there in each roads district? We require them of each of our contractors to do four of them. How many 24-hour security cameras are active in each of our road district satellite offices? How many unmarked or improperly marked construction vehicles, including our, what, foreman supervisor trucks and some of our dump trucks, they're not properly marked? I've given this information before to the county years ago when I worked here, but some of them are still not up to par. And it would benefit the county to bring those up there as people that are trained can let us know. I'd like to compliment the addition of the drop-in sanders. I'm not sure how many there are, but I've seen at least one. I've heard of others. I'd like to request that no more dump trucks be operated with their beds in the air while they're going down the road. And this, by the way, contributed to my injury. Ross will fill you in if you have any questions. But if you had the properly equipped dump trucks out there sanding, and Ross knows exactly what I'm referring, please give him the money to make it right for these guys because they like to do their jobs. And with those sanders, they can do better than us. So thank you very much. That's...
Anybody else wishing to make comment on agenda items? Okay. Come on up. State your name and address.
My name is Maggie Hopp in that 3042, Matt Pleasant Room. What I wanted to comment on was yesterday's budget we were talking about. And I went back and I looked at some of the figures that are on the budget sheets, spreadsheets that are on the Commissioner's webpage, and the complaint about us depleting our reserve funds. In 2012, in reserves, we had $9,361,674. And in 2013, we had almost $10.5 million. 2014, we had $9,606,000. 2015, we had $11,241,000. And then in your preliminary budget for 2016, Mr. Jones, you had starting at $12 million, using $1,105,000 that we were going to leave in the reserves, $10,991,344. And we have a specific reserve, restricted reserve, which is 72.5% at $1,606,187,000. My purpose of these figures is we have a commissioner who's complaining about not being able to put funds back into the reserves. By looking at the last four years, it looks like you've managed our county funds quite nicely, and you should be commended for that. Somehow you're getting these funds to, you know, bring the reserves back up. My concern about our commissioner asking for tax increases. Olympic Medical is asking for a 1% tax increase in revenue. City Council is asking, they're going to raise their utility rates 6.4% effective January. Columbia County PUD over the last, it says 2010, they did 8%, 2012, they did 3%, 2013, they did 3%. And this year, they're going to do a 3% increase. With the rise in costs associated with the regulatory mandates, the BPA increases with little options. Customers can expect rates to continue annually from 3% to 4% because of anticipated future BPA. And then if he asks, if you ask in January, or you ask next year for 1% in property taxes, how are the people that are living off of minimum wage jobs going to support this? We have done quite nicely with our reserves. And we have department heads that have needs and requests, and I think that we've done quite well with it. And I think that our county commissioners and I think our county administrators can meet those needs of these department heads and what our counties' needs are for our core services. I'm offended and I'm appalled that you would ask for a tax increase. I'm a property, you know, owner. I pay taxes. I pay taxes dearly. I'm now the widow, so I depend on one income. And I'm just like anybody else out here who's got, you know, who's got a big variance, you know? And I don't think we need another tax. I just wanted to express my opinion as to, you know, what I see on the county webpage and how our funds are being managed. And that was my opinion. And I want to thank you very much.
Anybody else want to make comment on agenda items? I can send agenda.
Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of November 23rd. Item 1B is approval of bids for the week of November 23rd. Item 1C is approval of payroll for the period ending November 15th. Item 1D is approval of budget modifications for the week of November 16th. Item 1E is letter to Nordian Administrative Services agreeing to be legally and financially responsible for Medicare payments received by the Health and Human Services Department as part of the application process to be a Medicare provider.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Move ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for course of presentations. We should reach.
Yesterday afternoon, the county's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met. We had a couple of applications, two specific applications that we did not completely review of. Because we had some technical questions, and I don't see Christina here, but Brian, please extend our thank you. She did a great job of preparing and answered a lot of questions from the committee. It's all on tape if anyone has a question. Here are the key outcomes of the meeting. One request is from the Williams Shore Memorial Pool for the amount of $28,500. And that was for the development of a strategic plan to look at the extension of the pool. The decision that we made was that that particular activity is related to capital investment. And although that is a 501(c)(6), if you look at the rules, it needs to be owned by a municipality in order to use those funds for capital. So the decision that we made was to encourage Steve to submit another application where he did have a good argument about swimming meets, bringing people into the community. But an application where it's very specific, it was marketing. And we do believe that that would be acceptable according to the rules for the lodging tax distribution. The second project we had was for the Port Angeles Theater project, Light Up the Linkin. And $50,000 was requested for the project. Originally, the application was for $50,000 to go toward the purchase of the building, which clearly we recognized as a possible problem. Confirm that with Christina's advice. That is not a facility that's owned by a municipality. And so the use of those funds for a capital acquisition property is not permitted use of the funds. They however submitted another application, and we're very happy that they submitted it. It was an application for the same amount, specific to marketing the activities of the theater. So they have also submitted an application to the city of Port Angeles Lodging Tax Committee. And outcomes from this include the following. We would like to coordinate the county and the city's work on this particular project. The committee approves the concept. We do believe, though, it's important that they complete the purchase before the distribution of those funds appear. And so we've scheduled another meeting to occur roughly in March. Now and then, we'll be reaching out to the city of Port Angeles and making a request that we might be able to coordinate that particular project. At any rate, both projects appear to have the possibility of being supported in the future. And again, thank you very much to Christina. She did a lot of good work, gave the committee some good reference material. One thing we will be doing in February is working on a new form and application form.
So Chair McIntyre has joined us, so we're recording some presentations.
Thank you. It's been a morning where I've been trying to be in two places at once, and that's always difficult. Course of presentation. We just got done with a Board of Natural Resource meeting. And, excuse me, there were some, the only thing to report of note was several salvage sales that the board approved in Eastern Washington that have been the result of the fires that we all know about over on the other side of the county. So otherwise, just routine business. Excuse me. And I overdosed on turdine last week, as is typical this time of year. So. You have any, any help? Thank you. And I appreciate Mike, you superintendent things while I was otherwise occupied. So we're through the consent agenda. We're done with the course of presentations. Is that for Administrator Jones? You got anything?
Nothing from me.
Okay. All right. Contracts and agreements.
Item 2A is an agreement between the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the Department of Commerce for the stop violence against women grant in the amount of $16,417 that was discussed in the last week's session.
Move adoption of the agreement. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2B is an agreement between the Sheriff's Office and the Department of Commerce for the stop violence against women grant. Again, $16,417 is the grant amount. All this was discussed yesterday in work session.
Move adoption of the agreement. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2C is an agreement between Health and Human Services and the Department of Ecology for the Waste to Resources Coordinated Prevention Grant to promote residents using the moderate risk waste facility in Port Angeles and technical assistance to small businesses. This grant is for $14,422.50 and requires a 25% local match.
Move adoption of the agreement. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2D is an agreement between Health and Human Services and the Department of Ecology for the Waste to Resources Coordinated Prevention Grant to monitor solid waste handling facilities and sites for compliance, investigate complaints, and provide education and outreach. The grant amount is $78,694 and requires a 25% local match.
Move adoption of the contract. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2E is an agreement between Health and Human Services with the Department of Ecology for the Toxics Cleanup Remedial Action Grant. And this agreement provides for $19,000 for the period 7/1/15 to 6/30/16.
Move adoption of the agreement. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 2F is an agreement between Public Works and the Department of Ecology for the Waste to Resources Coordinated Prevention Grant for organics waste reduction and commercial recycling education. This grant is $50,602 and requires a $16,867.50 match, as was discussed yesterday in work session.
Move adoption of the agreement. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll come and check sometime. Visit awards.
Item 3A is acknowledgment of proposals received for mental health substance abuse intervention services in the public schools.
These are just proposals, so there's not any dollar amounts.
There's three of them. Proposal to the Port Angeles School District Behavioral Health Specialist Grant Proposal. Here the application is Dr. Gerald Gabbard, and also Tina Smith O'Hara. Services. The only thing that I see with regard to the financial projection is a total of $1,000 hours at $70 per hour, $70,000. But what we bring out is one proposal. I'm asking you to turn around and you've got a name of the applicant.
Gerald Gabbard, Assistant Superintendent of the Port Angeles School District is the contact along with Tina Smith O'Hara, Communications and Communications Relations. And the grant proposal is on behalf of the Port Angeles School District Behavioral Health Specialists. So they're replying to the money from HHS.
Got it. Move to refer the proposals to the HHS Department for their review and recommendation. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 3B is acknowledgment of proposals received for design and engineering services for lower VNS left wing plane restoration and landing realignment. This is all one proposal, did you say?
There's four there.
Oh, there's four. Okay. A board.
And then proposals, so they're likely to be here, get them now.
We have a proposal from Shannon and Wilson, Gale Box 3,003, or 3,000, I don't know. All their documents are...
I have a proposal from Gray and Osborne, and their return address on the envelope is, excuse me, Arlington, Washington. Gray and Osborne is in multiple locations, but that appears to be the length of this proposal.
And there's a proposal from GEI Consultants in Seattle, Washington, and another from Tetra Tech from Seattle, Washington.
So, yeah, the budget is processes. Will you actually have the...
Happy to.
Well, part of your, well, Public Works. I'm sure they've referred to Public Works. Because, or ECD.
ECD.
So I want to make a motion to refer to your ECD for your recommendation.
Second. Move in second and discussion. Very much cracking the paper. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Under quick check, 10:25. Let's get to the things in administration.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing the Board of the Eclonation Committee. All this was discussed yesterday in work session.
Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 4D is a call for hearing to be held at 10:30 a.m. on December 15 regarding the proposed surplus of Sheriff's Office vehicles. All this was discussed yesterday in work session.
Move to call for the public hearing at 10:30 a.m. December 15. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 4C is a resolution adding a credit card management account for online campground reservation system, and reauthorizing existing park spare facilities departmental rest accounts. All this was discussed yesterday in work session.
Move adoption of the resolution. Second. Move in second and discussion. Good job in terms of managing that cost. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 4D is a resolution appointing a member to the Marine Resources Committee, namely Robert Reiling, is reappointed to serve as Conservation slash Environmental Representative for term ending December 31, 2018.
Move adoption of the resolution. Second. Move in second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And we, I believe, postpone item 4E here. Okay, good. Let's see. Public Works.
Item 5A is a resolution adopting the annual construction program for 2016.
Move adoption of the annual 2016 road construction program. Second. Move in second and discussion. I like your comments that, and there are activities that are occurring, especially the discussion trail, that I definitely hear what you're saying in terms of the west end. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And we are two minutes before the hearing. What shall we do? Somebody can do general public comments in about two minutes' time. That would be, we'll just open the public comments and then circle back to that after the, after the budget hearing here in a couple of minutes. Anybody, anybody want to make comments on anything in particular?
I think that's a little bit good, but I won't. Just, I have a comment, so I won't, but just for clarity from my 5A comments, I didn't put in there the aspect of direct road improvement products. There really isn't anything in this construction project for third, this third district really affects true, true road construction improvement products. A lot of Olympic Discovery Trail, a lot of signed products on 112, all viable, but they're not the core purpose of the road program. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
You didn't say anything, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm like Corby. I'm the Director of the File. Fans of Port County, thank you for your time. Thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to, just a couple of things, very briefly. I wanted to thank the Commissioners again for the enhanced homelessness funding that you released to help community services and to reassure you that it's very necessary. My little agency is the second leading shelter provider in the county, and we, on the average, return away maybe two or three people a month for housing. And last month, it was over 26 people that we turned away. The homelessness issue does not decrease, it is increasing. And I also wanted an opportunity to thank you for my appointment to Homelessness Task Force seven years ago, and I resigned for various reasons. If you're interested in those specifics, I'd be happy to share them. And to encourage you to continue to be thoughtful about, I'm entrusted that you will be, to be thoughtful about sustaining funding for us and being thoughtful about how that money is spent. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
You're welcome.
I see you on that committee, and I just want to say thank you back up because the kind of work that you do has to be, you know, gut-wrenching, heartbreaking, and you have the courage to continue to offer that service to the community. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and thank you.
Okay. Now we're being 10:30, so says my, still my smartphone here. We'll open our public hearing on time. And Administrator Jim, I'll kick it over to you to set up the hearing.
Thank you. This is one of the two final hearings, the other one tonight at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of the resolution adopting the 2016 budget and the general fund and road fund levies, all of which are in your, in your packets. As is our common practice, I would like to read into the agenda, or read into the minutes the agenda item summary, which has, which has been out for public review since last Thursday. The 2016 public hearing budget is hereby presented for public hearing on December 1st, 2015, as required by the Columbia County Home Rule Charter, and thus continues the budget adoption process that will result in an adopted budget by December 8, 2015. General fund revenues are projected to reach $33,811,020 as we continue to see increased economic activity across the county, resulting in improved budget projections for sale of county timber, sales and property taxes, intergovernmental revenues from the consolidated criminal justice agreements with the city of Port Angeles and Squim, along with new grant income for 2016. While we are not budgeting for the automatic 1% increase in property taxes as allowed by law, we do expect that the new construction values and corresponding increase in total assessed valuation will add to our total property tax collections. On the expenditure side, this budget makes good on the BOCC promise to use up most of our excess reserves in an effort to help stimulate the local economy. On the expenditure side, this budget makes good on the BOCC promise to use up most of our excess reserves in an effort to help stimulate the local economy. We are projecting thirty-six million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars in operating expenses. Using two million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars in reserves, approximately seven hundred thousand of which is one next thing, to balance the budget. The new ongoing expenses in the general fund include five hundred and sixty thousand in salary and benefits, six point six FTE. Resulting from the thirty-seven and a half hour work week to forty hour work week. One million, seventy-six thousand in salary and benefits, twelve point seven FTE. For new staff in the assessor treasurer permit center IT prosecutor facilities and WSU extension departments. A hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars in transfer to HHS operations for the WIC and NOLX own injections. Leaving about two hundred and thirteen thousand for the two thousand and sixteen COLA adjustments in salaries and annual service contracts. The projected ending fund balance of nine million, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is twenty-five point three percent of expenditures, is still very healthy. And is eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, oh eight three, more than the minimum amount our policies call for. The road department is, as always, the biggest of our special revenue funds. Spending twenty million, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for two thousand and sixteen against revenues of fourteen million, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. On two thousand and sixteen projects and an expanded road maintenance program. The other major spending, ten million, four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, will be for the build out of the Carlsberg Sewer Project. We expect to start construction as early in the spring as possible and hope to be finished by the end of the year, starting operation in two thousand and seventeen. As always, we like to estimate the impact on the local economy that results from the planned spending in each year's budget. For two thousand and sixteen, we plan for thirty-three million, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars in payroll costs. Five million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five in supplies, mostly local. Twenty million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty in contracted services that add much of that local. And twenty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars in capital project spending. A total of eighty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars being put back into the economy against. Twenty-eight million, eight hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars in taxes. Seven hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in licenses and permit fees. And one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in fines and forfeits. For a total of thirty million, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars taken out of the economy. This means that your county government is actually providing a net positive impact of fifty-two million, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars on the local economy. Most of this coming from your governmental revenues from state and federal sources, along with approved grants and use of accumulated reserves. Please review the attached budget data. Feel free to ask me, I'm your budget director, Debbie Cook, any questions that you might have. And yesterday, Commissioner McIntyre asked me to update and give to each of you, which I put on your desks, the, the. Cloud County Budget Trans two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen actuals of each year's actual general fund revenue, actual general fund expense, net to fund balance and the ending fund balance, along with the number of, of full-time equivalent county employees we had at, in each of those years. So, that is the budget presentation. And if anybody has any questions, it may be Debbie, please ask.
Questions from the board? Nope. Hearing none. We'll open our public hearing. There were five people signed up to provide comments or testimony. Randall Terry.
I think already took care of that part, sir.
All right, sir. Bob Lynette.
My name is Bob Lynette. I'm speaking for the North Olympic Club of Sierra Blood. We have more than four hundred and fifty members in Cloud County and over nine hundred and fifty. On the North Olympic Peninsula. We've been told that there's a three hundred thousand dollar budget. Budget that I have for conducting an environmental impact. For proposed shooting range at Sadie Creek, about seven miles west of Joyce. There's been no public discussion explaining why the county would propose to spend three hundred thousand dollars on a paper statement. That has no possibility of being built. Five years ago, citizens were told if Patrick was to have any budget hearing five years ago, that the county would never pay for the EIS. That was responsibilities of those who were pushing for this shooting range at Sadie Creek. This appears to reverse that position. The parking facilities budget expenditures on page one hundred and thirty-five of the proposed budget shows zero for the shooting range project. But actually it shows zero for all the projects. Just a total at the bottom, and I included it in the last page, I think it is. Copy of that page. So, it's kind of hard to tell what it's even for. I'm not sure if this is an EIS for the reconveyance of the land to the county. Is it an EIS from the shooting range? Or what, what is it really? There's no details and as I said, there's been no discussion about it. We're requesting that you delete this item in budget because. A, the Environmental Protection Agency set up the best management practices for shooting ranges all over the country. All fifty states were involved in developing the best management practices. As was the NRA. The proposed shooting range at Sadie Creek violates all, all of the major BNP's established by EPA. It exceeds the highest risk factors in every case. The North Olympic Peninsula lead entity for salmon, our community-based organization that developed salmon habitat restoration strategies. Opposes Sadie Creek's use for a shooting range. And I should tell you, this was a pretty exceptional letter and I included it in your packet. By them because, you know, there are experts on salmon restoration. They rarely write letters to DNR or to the commissioner. But they gave an exception and wrote this letter saying, basically saying, don't do this. That it's a bad idea. And they're the backbone for our locally based recovery efforts. Fisheries biologists of the Lower Elwatt Cloud Tribe and Makaw Nation have identified the Sadie Creek headwaters as one of the most critically important habitat areas for salmon in the western straight region. The Sadie Creek headwaters are listed as a biological hotspot by the draft wire nineteen watershed plan. A special designation that would prohibit development. To quote a letter from the North Olympic Salmon Coalition to the Department of Natural Resources, quote, "We respectfully oppose the DNR proposed reconveyance of the headwaters area of Sadie Creek to Cloud County so that a private shooting group can develop this critical habitat into a large complex of gun ranges." The sites opposed by, and there's a list of twelve different organizations, all the respected salmon organizations have opposed this site. It's a disservice to the taxpayers to spend this kind of money on a project that would endanger critical salmon habitat due to expensive litigation, and no question it will be litigated. And is doomed to failure in the end. We spend enormous sums on salmon enhancement projects. We're here proposing to spend three hundred thousand dollars on paperwork for a project that would destroy prime salmon habitat. So we spend money to restart and spend money to destroy. Please remove this proposal from your budget. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, just a couple of little things there. This item is included in the budget under REIT, real estate excise tax projects. I'm not, and it happened after a discussion at the, at the commissioner's last budget meeting late in October. Was decided to add it in the budget, but fully recognizing that this is a two-stage process. The putting it in the budget just makes it available without a budget emergency next year if next year's board decides they want to move forward. There would have to be a, an affirmative action on the form, on the part of next year's board to call for bids for the EIS statement. So, the, again, once again, the fact that it's in the budget does not in any way, shape or form require that it be spent. In fact, our process is, except for the smallest of things like supplies and under ten thousand. Every item bigger than that has to come back to the board for final approval at the time of spending. That's my revelation.
Sure, comments on the budget page. It's not called that on the budget.
I'm sorry.
Look at that last page of the packet.
And that, oh, that, okay, yeah, I can, I understand what he was doing. That, what is on the website right now is what was my recommended budget proposal to you. Any changes that you guys made in your last budget meeting are, are in the, the, the call for hearing and are in the total, the actual budget. But are not on the website yet because Debbie waits to put those out until you adopted the budget and then she puts out the final. So yes, what he's showing here is what my presentation was on October fifth. When we started the second round of the budget hearings, the administrators recommended budget. And I didn't have that in there. It was during the, the time of the second round of the budget meetings with department heads, the ones that were open and noticed to the public. That the question came up with Joel as he presents the REIT budget. Should that be added? And again, there's where my recollection was that the board instructed me to add it.
The majority of the board, I wasn't at that meeting.
Yes, the majority of the board, the, the board who was there instructed me to add it with the understanding that no expenditures would be made, as is our normal practice, until after the new board next year actually issues the, the call for RFPs.
I just want to say one quick thing. So you really have an understanding of this issue. This site was picked because it was the only site among a number of sites that were looked at by the park people and other people years ago because they could put a thousand yard range in this site. They couldn't put it, you know, where in Cloud County you have a thousand yards at so low. It was difficult to find. They couldn't even squeeze it into the Sadie Creek site and it was deleted, the thousand yard range. That opens up all the other sites that were looked at that are way more reasonable from an environmental standpoint and salmon protection. And really what needs to happen here is, because we're not opposing a, a shooting range. We're opposing it in this site, critical habitat site. What needs to happen is Joel or somebody, and I don't know why this wasn't done five years ago, needs to bring together the interest groups on this thing. Pick a site because there are many good sites where you can put it now that we've dropped the thousand yard range. And get together and get consensus on this thing before you go blow three hundred thousand dollars on the EIS.
Thank you. Josie Paul.
My name is Josie Paul. I'm a resident of Twin, which is in this watershed. I'm here to oppose the three hundred thousand dollar item. Suggests I cannot include it. The reason is I could reiterate a number of things that Bob said. It is a biological hotspot that's, who's invested, the community, tribes, some salmon restoration groups have invested literally millions of dollars in this water site. Mostly to get salmon up to the Sadie Creek headwaters. This site has common headwaters, both Sadie Creek and Suzy Tree. Suzy Tree is a left bank tributary, Sadie Creek is the right bank tributary, the eastern river. This site has one of the most valuable Coho rear areas on the peninsula. Big class one rutlands there, about seventy acres. There's a myriad of streams there. We've got salmon respirations on five separate streams that go through this site. There's marble murelats that live on the, on the east side. We don't know how the range will type that. If you look at best management practices, lead is a real problem in these shooting ranges because it. Elemental lead, simple lead bullets turns into erodes or oxidizes into lead compounds. Lead dioxide, lead sulfates, lead carbonate. And those, those are the compounds that become bioavailable and then move fairly quickly through the environment. In, in areas where you have a lot of rainfall, if you do have this site, which is seventy to eighty inches. And areas where you have acidic soils, the soils on, on the western end, the business end of the shooting ranges is muck to muck. That gives you pH down in the pores, four point five, four point eight, extremely acidic. Ecology has found that when you compare sites with, 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 with less acidic soils, five point five pH, compared to more basic, more alkaline soils that you typically find in shooting ranges. Well, actually, the sal was lead at, at ten million hertz faster than, than the safe sites. And so this site is even, even more acidic than the, the worst case scenario that ecology addresses. So, when, to put, to spend three hundred thousand dollars on an, on an EIS, any EIS will, will fairly show you that you cannot run shooting range here at this site. There's just too much water. There's no technology that we have that can, that can run, run the site, run, operate a shooter, shooting range set like this. So you'd be wasting the taxpayers' money. A lot of the groups that have opposed it, and there's a whole lot have offered to help shooters find a range. But, but the most important thing is when the, when the EPA put together, worked with the National Rifle Association and other shooting groups, put together the best management practices. These were designed to help communities find appropriate sites so they didn't run into all these problems, which we have run into in the past. Even here in Cloud County, the cleanup at Salt Creek Park, where the EPA came in and they found lead contamination in the soil at sixty-six thousand, six hundred parts per million. Superfund sites qualify with lead contamination in the soil at five hundred parts per million. At the Sunnydale Site in Squam, where the ecology forced a cleanup, the lead contamination in the pond sediment was seventy-seven thousand parts per million. And the soil was forty-six thousand parts per million. These are common kinds of figures. And there's no way to fully clean this up. The, the appropriate way to go forward at this point is not with an EIS, with a failed site that was never properly vetted. But to, but to bring in a professional group, a professional site that can look at the ninety-two thousand acres we have, trust sign and get the sites available. And then eliminate all the other, all the sites, all the sites characteristics, then make it inappropriate and then make the liability a public nuisance. And then narrow it down to, to some appropriate sites and then bring in the whole community. Make this a, something that we can all, we can all address, environmentalists, well shooters. And I would recommend that we follow best management practices. That's why they're there, they're voluntary, that, that's what sets aside productive in communities where the taxpayerages are represented. And then ask the, require a, a, a business plan that a bank would accept. And then, and then adjust the bonding issues and insurance issues for, for safety and environmental cleanability. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Reander.
Good morning. Kenneth Reander, one of the West Side. I think the Sierra Club's representative and Mr. Paul for your comments about the proposed site. I had expressed my thoughts on this two times previously when it came up negatively. Thought it was a very poor site and a lot of reasons that it was found on. Think you heard a lot of that today and I'm very pleased to hear those comments. I also told you that I was not in favor of the county investing in this project at any level. And we were looking at transferring hundreds of acres of timber lands to other lands to allow this to happen there. And I wasn't for that proposal either. So, on to the beginning then. I've been a resident of whatever area for thirty-five years. I have a valid taxation to be regarded. I haven't found the level of taxation to be impressive. I had examined the taxation levels in many other areas around the country and hopefully even with construction during that period, our taxes have perhaps gone 2% year over a year up. I haven't found that to be difficult to deal with for, you know, I've listened to Commissioner Chapman's comments yesterday, I ran a light on, you know, the big imbalance here with the budget, this current proposal. And I was against, I was one or two that spoke against the decrease in sales tax. I was for a 1% increase because of the increase in spending that was proposed and enacted. And I still feel that way. And I thank Commissioner Chapman for his comments, his concerns that this big imbalance is not sustainable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Corby.
I had one thought, thank you.
Okay. That concludes the list of people that signed up. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dale Wilson, Post Office, Box 817, Port Angeles. Many of you are aware and may have received an email recently from the county treasurer and the election budget in such a way that our treasurer was concerned about the revenue projections for 2016 and some of the budgetary decisions that were made as a result of those revenue projections. And she was also concerned about what I characterized as a sudden, unexpected $100,000 increase in the county prosecutor's budget. I think that was over and above what he had originally asked, and what he originally asked was already, I think, perfroming the new personnel in the property and his office as a result of the new lineup of prosecutions for Mr. Dean and his third in the entire county. I don't think it's been decided or discussed openly and publicly that contract for the renewed prosecution system is supposed to bring an extra million dollars into the county. And I don't know if that is going to go to the prosecutor's office also, and will that make a total of a $1.5 million increase in county prosecutor's budget? I'm sure this can be fleshed out. You, gentlemen, may already know it's just something that has not been brought to the public. And I think that due diligence requires a little better explanation of these issues so that taxpayers can know and better understand. And also with the concept that was brought up earlier about putting money into the budget just in case the next person decides to spend it, that may be normal and prudent, but it also creates some other issues, such as we found with the, this summer we had a million dollars that came out of the Pearl Burke Sewer and went over to the port for their deposits program. And the manner that it was done, it seems to make it too easy to, once money is budgeted, it seems much too easy to take it out of whatever it was suggested for and put it into another project. And so, if we are going to put things in budget, it should be budgeted just for the item that it might be used for and not be open to establishing for another project. And I think that's very important to consider going forward. Going back to the email and the concerns of the treasurer, I know it's become difficult and painful for some of us to get those meetings that we need with our other elected officials in the county, but I think we all need to put on our big board hats and do whatever it takes to bring everybody that has information, has input into these things, and come to some type of conclusion. This is a small county, and as we can see, taxpayers are getting hit on every side. The city wants to increase taxes, the county wants to increase taxes, the courts want to increase taxes, so even though it's 1%, 1%, 1%, to taxpayers, that's 3%. And so, we need to be much more prudent, much more careful, and intend our due diligence in order to get these projects funded properly, but make sure that the taxpayers understand exactly if the revenue projections are accurate, where the new money is coming from, and a lot of these things that I think are not as transparent as I think they could be. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Head phone on P O Box 101, following Bay. My testimony today is in regards to, assuming this budget resolution is before you today, you speak of, I believe down in the now therefore under 2, a actual levy increase here of zero dollars, an increase of 0%. I'm in support of that, but I am concerned today, and I've come before you with my testimony from what I would call, I refer to as a citizen's political fodder over the past several weeks about the next session of this commission, that everything needs to be deferred to the next session. I'm hearing a lot of that, that really concerns me a lot, and what will happen in the next session regarding this 0%? Will that get changed? And in the discussion at work sessions and such, so I'm pretty concerned. So, I want to address why this is a big issue. I've heard testimony from the public comments regarding the road department and the lovely Discovery Trail in support of it, realizing that isn't the primary mission of the road department. That is an ideal that the citizens of this county want promoted. Well, that secondary purpose of the road department needs to find another revenue source. If you're going to increase my taxes, my levies, then, and my roads are not in the best of repair, then you need to find another revenue source for that. And I bring this up because it's best described in the executive summary of today's hearing. Under the road department is, as always, the biggest of our special revenue funds, spending below $20 million against revenues below $14 million. That means to me and mine now, about 58% of that road department budget of 2016 is hard revenue money. And how much of that is on the Discovery Trail concerns me, especially when I have 38 unfunded road projects on the tip, direct road projects on the tip that are unfunded. So, it's time, if you're going to raise my taxes in the next commission, to also consider other revenues. And I would suggest since under the charter, all three commissioners still representing, that will slightly take a twist here in the next election, but I suggest all three commissioners come on out to ports on Friday and engage yourself into another revenue process called the Forest Collaborative, the U.S. Forest Service, and the Olympic Collaborative under Congressman Kilmer. I suggest you come on out, and I think the public will be a part of that, that's the purpose of that meeting, and let's entertain other revenue sources to discover a way to address these added ideas that the citizens of this county want, so it's the lovely Discovery Trail. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Mike Doherty. My wife and I call it 617 South E, Port Angeles. Couple of necessary comments. I agree with most of Bob Lynette's history, and for 25 or more years, not familiar with the county board, has committed to try to help on appropriate transfer of EINR items for a park purpose, but never involving money. Now, there was a later, I think it was $5,000, it was carried for two years for some environmental or some permit processing, but never $300,000. Just amazing, here I was in service with the board for about $300,000. And over the years, I'd agree with the comments of two speakers regarding environmental impacts. Over the years, I got off Sandy Creek primarily because I thought the drier climate east of the county, you could meet more of the standards that the referents this morning for site, and more interested groups could get involved in maintenance recommendations. Secondly, it would be better, I always thought, to have a regional facility serving law enforcement in Jefferson County and Clow. And there's over 30 federal, state, tribal law enforcement agencies, as you know, and that was always my priority. I thought we owed personnel and law enforcement a use of gun range. Secondly, the opportunity to charge some fees for recreational shooters, firearm, gun safety classes, those kind of things also were great benefits. So, I always thought the county's big enough to have gun range, but the site risks. And the cost is very high when you look at just the road development, just to put the road into that site is about, what is it, a million dollars a mile to construct a road these days. So, to go from 112 just to the gun site, and the board has never discussed that. So, add that cost to the development cost, and you're talking about real money. My main point today is just to support those county staff, like officials, who think that you should have a better look at the actual reserves coming in and be real conservative. And that's been the practice in the past and served the county well. Year to year, there was much more predictability in the budget process than there has been this year, and I think it's a little bit appalling to me as the county administrator, several times during the process, has said, "Well, I'm just doing what a majority of the board tells me." Well, you had staff recommending an alternative, a stronger reserve, a little more conservative relative investment. I would say relook at that, those recommendations, and go with the conscience that has a better, long-range, sustainable financing picture for Highland County, and not just the employees and managers, but also for the public. Having a better reserve also in the past has provided more of an incentive for department head elected officials, and sometimes the more creative younger employees who look for some grant opportunities. Some of that's gone away in recent years, to be honest. Some of those employees have left Highland County. Some are looking for jobs today, waiting to see if there's a change. But that reserve gives the opportunity, it was quarter by quarter, maybe month by month now, to look at a reserve, if somebody comes up with an idea for a grant opportunity, and our county was one of the few, and the chairman's been recommending this, that having that reserve meant we could spontaneously go for some funds, even in the road department, where some counties just didn't have a match. And I think that's probably the case today. My main comments are about climate change. And as I hope you have read the Toon County report by now and looked at some of the recommendations, and one of the recommendations that came out of all three of the work session days with stakeholders was that all local government should develop a climate action plan. Highland County four years ago was step three of a five-step process, and there are multiple models used for steps, but we were three out of five steps. And I'm hoping that this board may put a little bit of money, incentivize each employee group, or look to an outside group, or a multi-jurisdictional regional group through the North Olympic Development Council, Council, pardon me, group, to approach this in more of a collaborative, regional way. If you're looking in papers recently, Yesterday of Day, Bill Gates has corralled a bunch of billionaires, and the billions of dollars they're putting up, best I can read, are to be incentives for government action and research and development action. They're just not going to give it away. They want to incentivize some things to make the planet more livable for kids and grandkids of ours. So, to see Compton County put climate change on the back burner the last several years, I think, should be looked at seriously and take a giant step at least to make some kind of an impact on the next year looking at climate change. One thing, since you're doing a great job at Loosie Meeting on the parking lot, as I understand, and last time I checked with the facilities manager, that conduits are being put in for electronic electric vehicle charging stations, but maybe not the charging stations. If you take the 1% property tax, you could put those charging, six charging stations in. So, it would be part of the proposed Olympic Loop electric vehicle charging station network, which helps locals in all those areas, would help the county move to some electric vehicles, which I was hoping to see in the budget this year at least too. But more importantly, maybe for the economy, is to stimulate tourism, to move electric vehicles up onto the peninsula. And the grant, the group I've been working on has the potential, we just have to find a nonprofit to adopt the responsibility of $135,000 to supplement some local activity, for instance, the Jamstown Drive, putting in charging stations. So, there's a predictable system of charging stations. Highland County could be a leader and put a couple of those in, in this project. Well, the conduit's in and you're not finishing the project yet, so I hope you'll take the 1% property tax, I hope you'll take the 1% road tax. I think as I experienced at the base, the road department never has enough money, and it's headed to testify. Depending on how you look at it, you know, the Olympic Discovery Trail does not take a lot of straight road tax money. The bulk of that money over 25 years has been grants from federal and state governments. Now, it was a little at times needed for a match, and there have been some road taxes later years put in, but the bulk of it in the early years is continuing, it's been state and federal payments. So, a climate action plan, charging stations for electric vehicles, and just try to sort of anticipate future climate change in some way in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one other little one, this one's just an experience again, is that if you have $300,000, you have some money extra in this reserve, you want to stimulate the economy, you can stimulate it in traditional ways, or you can do things like putting solar panels on a building, which saves probably $45,000 a year, I think now, the second generation. Putting in electric vehicle charging stations. IT, I'm sure, has GIS technology, I love their elected officials managers, Jim, I don't know, they probably have, they've always had some great ideas on IT improvements, which will be investments that save money for years and years and make the work environment even better for employees and better for the customers. So, I'd say IT is another area where some other investment, if you have that extra money, would pay off in near years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? See, no one. What's the pleasure of the board, of course, closing the hearing?
Well, actually, we have to continue until tonight.
Yeah, we'll close this phase of it, and then we'll, but if there's, if there's any board discussion that needs to ensue at this moment, we'll, of course, keep the hearing open until we conclude this evening.
Again, I don't want to argue, I don't support the $300,000 for EIS. I only intend to support a contract next year for an EIS for the site, and I think all the comments that have been around on the shooting range. I think where we're sitting here and next year, we'd be remiss to not really look at this letter and delve into it because it's a really impactful letter, and that the North Olympic Peninsula Lead Entity specifically puts to writing their support for shooting range. And I think the board could take that in the new year and re-task the parks department with working with this group to maybe identify a site that they would support, but without their support, you're just going to, a lot of time has been wasted, and there's no time. And it has been true that I have not supported it, that the county made for EIS forever, nor has, up until this year, had that ever been fully discussed. But I think there's an opportunity, and I think that we would be remiss to not take this letter as a blueprint to work for a future site that would work for the county and all the comments that came in. I just wonder if by leaving the $300,000 in the budget, if it just creates a distraction and takes away from the impact of this letter that the board could use as a blueprint moving forward. Take it out now and then come back later when you have a site and figure out what the county can really afford. I just wonder if that would remove a distraction and keep an organization, and all the organizations that the North Olympic Peninsula Lead Entity works with, could we keep them at the table and engage them? So, that's one thought. It's not, the money's not, I don't know how much money can be spent next year with this letter, so it really is not necessary to budget it. If something moved really fast, a budget emergency could be done next year. So, that's one thought. Another thought that I have is that, I thought that we had already, I thought that the charging stations had been approved in the budget, so I'm curious, I guess I'm curious, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Doherty finding out that it was removed, and I'm curious how he found out and I didn't, so I guess I missed that meeting as well. Appreciate his work on that, but I think I would advocate that Joel come back to the board and figure out how, if you're going to put the conduit in, it's like rewiring for a house, putting everything in for high-speed internet and not putting a modem in place. It doesn't make a lot of sense. It's nice to have, but people usually want the whole thing hooked up. Finally, if anybody walks downtown where the city has charging stations, and I saw former mayor Kid here, you know, quite frankly, I'm down there twice a day usually, through that area, at least once a day with my dog. I can't tell you the summer I had any Teslas, BMW electric vehicles were sitting there, charged up or not. There may be people who drive a Tesla who have no discretionary income, but I highly doubt it. I suspect people with Teslas on the North Olympic Peninsula are in our hotels, they're in our shops, they're spending money downtown. However, there were times where they were both being used, it's only two charging stations. So, if the county had a couple, and I thought the double park program, so I guess I'd like to find out what happened there, who filled that part of the, that wasn't discussed publicly.
I believe it was, I believe it was.
I believe it was, I believe there was an option in the bids, and when the bids came back, I think Joel asked the commissioners, but we can make sure that he did that, but my recollection is, is that it was an option, and the bids came in a little higher than he thought, and so he didn't, he didn't exercise the option, just put in the conduit. But, and, and that was approved by the board, but I certainly will have him come back here.
The conduits can't cost that much to put the actual plug in. Anyway, my point is that if you had the city had put in and being used, and these aren't, I suspect there's a lot of discretionary income that comes with people driving those vehicles, so nothing else, truers and folks should be supportive of that. So those are a couple of my thoughts.
I will ask Joel to come back and, and give an update to the board.
And I, I don't think you can say that the $300,000, even if we didn't use it for, you know, if it's not used for ERS, it can be used for another project, I think we need to, we need to not do that in future years. So, you know, I really, I really, I didn't doubt that that money's going to be spent next year. I didn't think the Parks Department would spend the money, I think it was, if I remember, I was just, you guys probably just wired it thirty, but. Creates a distraction, and really, the letter's much more powerful, the letter of support for a shooting range, and appreciate Bob's comments publicly stating his support for a shooting range, you know, it's really, that's a big step, and could lead to a much better project that has a lot of support. And then finally, I think that we do need to revisit our climate action plan in the new year, and I do think that that's something that we need to continue to bring our employees to the table on, because I think that that's, they're the ones who have so many great ideas, so. I would remove the $300,000 as a distraction, and I would take the letter as a blueprint to move forward. If you're, if you're serious about a shooting range, but if you just want a political parking point, just leave the money in, and you can beat up people in another party, because they don't support gun rights and shooting ranges, that's just, that's going to be false and be a distraction. If you really are serious about a shooting range, you would want to work with a group like this to say, "Let's get one done," and then with their support, that's, that's, that's the pathway forward. So I think sometimes these issues just become fodder for campaigns and political statements, so I hope this doesn't become that. Those are my thoughts. Again, probably completely different than your team.
They're closer than you think, Mike. The $300,000 is intended to allow the opportunity to look at the options, this issue's been kicked around for a long time. If we can find a way to get people to the table to accomplish the same thing without spending that kind of money, it's a double or something else. And I support that, the projects in the district, I would very much like to sit with, you know, the people that are saying, "There's a better alternative." But to be careful as we, as we look at those alternatives, that we do go through a process, that's similar to what you're doing with EIS, objectively find out what are those standards that we should use, objectively look at those other sites. If we could pull that off without spending $300,000, I'd be very much in favor, very happy to dedicate time to that process. And then, Mike, thanks for the, is Mike still here? He's back in the corner there. Mike, thanks for the information with regard to climate change. There's the RCND, which I sit on, has a pretty important meeting on Thursday, it's our annual meeting, we're taking a look at our budget and project and activities for the upcoming year, and it's been quite a challenge to, to get money into that organization, basically via Department of Commerce, and challenges a polite way of saying, "Boy, workouts are a pain." Yeah, I mean, we are, I'm treasurer of the organization, we are hand and mouth, literally. So that's the organization that did have, via a grant sponsored by Department of Ecology, meetings with the public dealing with climate change, and I thought that process was constructive, the work was compiled, it's available, and I see the opportunity to work with that information to take the next step. Not that terribly inclined to pull language off the shelf, anybody hands us inserting into our regulations, but very interested in looking at, where has, where has this model been applied elsewhere in the state of Washington, or anywhere? And what are some of the kind of outcomes that we should look for and support? You know, the idea of charging stations, I studied that one because, actually, Chamber of Commerce, Clonan Bay, was very interested in that. We saw the opportunity for increasing tourism, your comments, right? There's a clientele that's associated with that. And it would be really good if we could get a conversation to the commissioners, because I came across a couple of things when I looked into it. So some of the issues, we weren't able to resolve, you see, there are different speeds with which you can charge, and there's different costs associated with that. And so the ideal would be, can you charge up, I mean, if you're a hotel, definitely plug it in, make it more, your vehicles charge. But something we didn't anticipate is what you also need to do to support that in terms of charging for it, is kind of like having a self-service gas station, you run into very similar issues in terms of self-service charging, if you're going to charge a fee for it. So those are some of the things that popped up, and over only a few months worth of looking at the issue, but those are, to me, manageable to take on a bit. And that's kind of my question, is why, now that the problem's recognized, who's out there on the front of us that's dealing with it, what is it that we could look at? So the RCND meeting Thursday at John Lane Marina at 1:00, you know, if you had a chance to share some thought, I'd have you to share your thoughts, if you wanted to share them with me, Mike. Or come to the meeting, you've been to the meetings, thank you. And the idea of having a conversation about the charging stations.
And if you revisit that gas.
Yeah. And, you know, have a good comprehensive, because it can be cheap, but actually you can get almost for free some of the various little charging machines, and it can be expensive, and so the conversation kind of needs to run along the lines of which one should we think about and what. But I'm very open to it.
As an FYI, I believe Clonan Transit is planning on at least one charging station at the Gateway Transit Center, so instead of these things kind of happening at random, some kind of encased in the, in the tourism segment of our economy, that may be the right venue to have the discussion of where these things ought to be, some sort of a strategy going forward, so that all the various pieces of government and private sector people that want to, that want to think about this can have some sort of a plan that they can plug into, no pun intended.
We have a conduit, we should at least finish that private project, but.
I'll definitely bring Joel back at his earliest convenience. With regards to the shooting range, as it's well known, I've long been a proponent of a shooting range. This has long been on the strategic plan for the Parks Board, it's just been stuck for many, many years, and the, the spending authority that'll be available to, to next year's board is simply a, a, a means to get the conversation unstuck and concluded. And of course, that conversation is going to be inclusive of where should we put the thing? That, that is always the case when you're, when you're thinking about a park facility such as that. So that, that I hope next year, I will be here to participate in the conversation, but that I hope at least gets the thing moving and closer to a conclusion about that as a component of our, of our parks constellation. A shooting range is actually a benefit to the environment, I believe, because if you know where the, the spent bullets are, you can manage them, whereas right now, it's just kind of a random event on state lands or private lands or what have you. So I, I think an actual location for such a, for such a thing would be a benefit not only to tourism, the economy, and our citizens, but it would.
So why not back off that one, reclassify it as a technical consultant work to identify the shooting range that could possibly work in the county? That way, we don't lose a year, because I don't think we should be modifying the projects as much next year, it hasn't seemed to be real positive with the public. So why not, if you're serious about wanting to move a shooting range forward, if you want to leave it stalled for another year, then maybe the EIS money won't be spent, and then we'll take another board down the road to maybe look at. I think it's a really reasonable request that that's given, and I know in my conversations with leadership at the DNR, they would much prefer that the county take another look at what's out there, and there's professionals who can do that, that know the rules and regulations. So I just wonder if that'd be a better way, would now be saved for within $300,000, put a cap in, draw up a proposal, see if we can find somebody, I'm thinking, if you can find somebody, hopefully, under $15,000 to $30,000, that's one tangent of what's budgeted, it honors the folks that testified, it also honors those who do want a shooting range or to think three of us, a couple of us, supported and still do, but I'm not, I, I would be, Bill, the site's just not, it's just solid, and it's not worth, and so I, I can't spend $300,000 just to look at the environmental impacts of the site, I don't think it was just for one site. Maybe that's a good way to go, and then without, like, to put honor moving this forward, we could look at that in the first quarter to offer up a contract and work with these, make them a consultant, and work with all the various groups, DNR, Sam and Co., which is, I don't know, community, the shooting community. We never did that, we never did kind of pull, try to pull all those together, we assumed that everybody was at odds, and that would be a new strategy, and maybe that would be a better chance. To me, it seems like, oh, doesn't move the project forward, they'll leave the $300 for EIS.
No, I like the direction that you're heading on it, and if I'm hearing it correctly, you're saying, instead of earmarking it as EIS money, it's.
Which is what the letter is to do in the letter.
Gives us the flexibility to hire people that would be able to address some of the issues that are being put on the table. So does that?
That's what I heard today, that people were asking us to consider, is what's in the letter, the letter's a pretty positive statement, you know, support for a shooting range. So to me, it seems like that could then be something we could look at the first quarter of next year, then waiting until next budget cycle, amend the EIS money that probably, well, if that's purpose, it won't spend next year.
So the cost.
Much lower number, too.
Yeah, the cost, I don't like to spend $300,000 telling you for a fact, Mike, it's just kills me. The cost center that rests in now, if we change the nomenclature of the project from EIS to site selection, do we have to do anything else?
Well, again, the amount is more important than the nomenclature, what is actually, it's very generic, what is listed in the budget work papers, not the actual budget. The budget you're adopting is just the, the big one-page that, which has just totals, it doesn't have the identified budget work papers grouping in it. However, in the budget work paper grouping, it simply identifies it as shooting range plant, $300,000. It doesn't say EIS, it doesn't say state grade, it doesn't say anything. So you can do whatever you want, we're here to support anything you would like to see, if you would like to see more specificity in, in the, it's not really part of the budget you're adopting, other than the total. So the total, I would say, is much more critical than the nomenclature, but the nomenclature was specifically left in there as just shooting range plan. I remember the discussion was that under a properly vetted EIS, there would have to be at least three and often five alternate sites as part of the EIS, and that's what you specifically asked for and not money paid for. But, so I, whatever the board would like to do, we can.
My point is that in the letter, the county gets kudos for looking at providing a safety patient, they raise some concerns, they're probably trying to move that, well, obviously they're valid concerns with a specific site, and they go on and ask the county to hire a consultant with experience in identifying sites, and a consultant that would know the environmental, you know, the federal rates, and NRA, you're supposed to, you know, somebody who's experienced, and then you can get that off the amount to one-tenth of the money budgeted next year, and you get to, if we could spend 2016 identifying the site that keeps the DNR, Fire Law Groups, county, boy, that would be, that would be such a huge move forward over the last 10 years, that I think then you could really begin to put together a financing plan and provide money right now, that's my point. I think that's actually a pretty positive way forward, and it starts with the money that we have today.
Since I was the one that started out that, and it's been a request of mine for the last four years, I'm not wedded to a gun range at a particular site, or shooting sports park at a particular site, I'm wedded to the idea of having one. And I, I merely wanted to get the process moving. The process, the process will move, hopefully, in the most appropriate way possible, which is, as you just described, site selection, feasibility study, you know, detailed engineering, environmental analysis, and so on and so forth. That, that's the logical way to do it. I just simply wanted to have it move from a $7,500 land that's been in existence for who knows how many years into something actually that is going to result in a shooting sports park at some place in the county. And so there, there potentially are other places, but I think we just need to get on with it. So that's, that's really what's in my mind. I'm not wedded to a particular location, I'm just, I'm just wedded to the idea of having one.
As if the DNR.
As if, as if. The DNR would certainly love to have a place where folks in Clonan County and maybe tourists can go, so that people just don't go on state lands at random and shoot into trees or whatever they shoot at, you know? I'm not talking about hunting cars, but.
Well, maybe, maybe you could double task Joel on the next week, just what he thought of reasonable budgeting for a consultant.
He actually told us during that meeting, and he estimated it was, it was between $50,000 and $70,000 to hire, and he had a couple of bids from four or five years ago, to hire a firm that would do all the looking at the best management practices, which has never been done on this site, and, and give a report back to the board.
What about making it different sites?
And, and, and the idea being that if, in fact, this site really isn't viable, what other sites would be available? He did offer that, my recollection is, he thought it would be between $50,000 and $75,000 for the cost of that.
Well, I just, if you budget $50,000 to $70,000, you're available to $50,000 to $70,000.
Yeah.
It seems like that's a year's work.
It is.
Full-time work for, for our county employee, I just don't buy that you could get somebody to do that.
That was what he reported to us, and this was an outside firm, not an employee doing it, but.
And this was just a, this was just a, you know, as I remember the conversation with Joel, it was just a.
And he told us.
Scientific, wild.
He told us, if you're serious about an EIS, which as part of it, would look at other sites, he said, $300,000 is the amount that's going to cost.
Right.
That was what he said.
But, you know, first things first, let's, let's take the first step.
You know, if you can keep the, the groups at the table, who, obviously, this site is, they have great concern, and they're, they're right on it, and, well, the reason is, I just wonder, for less money, not looking at this site, just looking around the county and identifying areas specifically, the Forest Service, maybe DNR lands, the county own, like, even private lands.
Even state lands, we talked about the middle of the peninsula being an outstanding place between the two counties that has a lot of flat, state parkland, that is, perhaps under U.S.
Exactly. So long and the short, pick a number, I'll just pick $150,000.
I can, I can get that done, Debbie, you can make the change before, and bring it back to what the board wants for tonight's hearing.
The $250,000 goes into fund balance in the week.
It would, yeah, that's true.
And off we go. I support that.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Question of the prosecutor, that's all I had in mind, so we will recess this hearing and reconvene at 6:00 PM in this, in this room tonight, and continue our thought process, hopefully there will be some other folks here to testify and provide comments.
Oh, we did have one more that came in, I'm sorry, came in via email just before we started the meeting, it was from Judy Larson. She asked that we submit the following as her public comment, if you'd like it, maybe do it now or wait until tonight, your choice.
Just we'll get him to the clerk and...
Yeah, we'll just include her email in the hearing record, we all have it to read, so.
Perfect. Generally, your comments follow along the lines from what we heard today. Just want to follow up with a little more, trying to get the audio files uploaded a little quicker. That follows through what we discussed yesterday with the charges. Are you asking for audio and video, or upload things quicker and more accessible? So just piggybacking on that, just a comment on reserves, and then just the projects. And there's specifically for a project, maybe just stick with that project for the year.
Okay. So we're at recess until 6:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, this is why I'm here today. You know, I've always said, I'm going to go back. And just let me add, I'm here for two issues, but let me add, I submitted my testimony and I didn't hear response to my concerns. I offered, I basically offered the second district commissioner a chance to give me some confidence in 2016, so I didn't hear that. So I'm going to try this a different way, I'm going to try this a different way.
I didn't get that.
Chair, am I speaking through or am I being addressed by the commission?
Good.
So I'm going to try this a different way. I'm going to offer two other ideas today, and I would hope I get some down the road that don't necessarily end today. I have concerns about the Trust Advisory Committee who was addressing it last week on the aspect of the Department of Natural Resources Commissioner's plans representative personality. I call it a letter, but I guess it was an email to you. I've reached out to that representative and expressed my dissatisfaction with the agency representing a select group of citizens in this county and not reaching out to the main theme behind this whole effort. I'm the one who came for the charter review in the beginning, a little less than, a little more than ten months ago, and requested that all resources of the county be returned to the county. I didn't specify timber, I didn't specify lead, I specified all resources for the sole purpose of creating sustainability in this county. Throughout the charter review commission process, I had to compromise, and what that compromise was presented to you in Trust Advisory Committee. I'm a bit appalled at this point that the process is being stonewalled, in my opinion. This committee needs to go forward, it needs to happen now. For the sole purpose it was addressed within the review commission, charter review commission, that if you didn't act, the charter review commission had the opportunity to then take it back to the voters of the county. Now, from that aspect alone, that's the intent of the charter review commission. And I'm appalled that we're going to possibly delay this until 2016 before we ever get this committee going. I'm getting that impression because first and foremost, I, a citizen of this county, am not being included, I'm not being informed, I'm not hearing about this committee. I have to ask the questions all the time. No one is reaching out, the county's not reaching out to me, DNR's not reaching out to me, saying, "This is where we're at, and this is what we're trying to do, what are your ideas, what's your thoughts, does this mean what you thought in the beginning?" We don't have our website up and going that I would use as a public process to see how this committee is taking place. So I plead to the commission today, please make this public. If you're going to stall this or delay it, I'll tone down the term, if you're going to delay the committee until 2016, please put that out to the public.
Can we next week?
Well...
Eighteen by...
So here I am today, this is the first I've heard. Okay, so there's one requesting. Second one's actually a little more challenging for you. This is Shoreline Master Plan update. I'm here today to report as a citizen that I have a vote of no confidence to the planning commission or the Department of Community Development or the Director of Community Development. That process is failing me tremendously from the aspect, the public record of comments, first off, in the first two-thirds of 2014 have gone up in smoke. I've addressed this Department of Community Development, where are all those comments from the first two-thirds of 2014? No response. In fact, I made it as a public comment to the process, and that comment has never been made public. So I'm going to propose to you today, you as the Board of Commissioners, you have a role, a direct role with the planning commission. It's not just a task of the community development. Under duties, the committee shall be responsible to the Board of Commissioners for its duties and actions. That means they work for you too, per domain. And I'm asking you now today, I'm making the proposal to the Board of Commissioners, that if the planning commission is not actively addressing the Shoreline Master Plan program to include all aspects, public outreach, public participation, public comments, and making their actions available to the public, which none of their meeting summaries from October or November are available to the public unless you make a public records request, none of the matrices that I've asked the planning commission to please make public and requested of the Community Development Department have ever been made public, other than the initial draft created by a representative of Community Development. All their actions are not being put out to the public. So today I'm proposing to you to take into effect, hold on just two seconds here, another policy or another county code. Ah, come on. Uh-oh. And it is going to be referred to as... Uh-oh. So I've lost it. It's also in the planning commission code, called the Western, something like that, Western Planning Commission. There's a segment in the county code about addressing growth management act and shoreline management, all these aspects of planning commission, a standalone commission called the Western Planning Commission, which incorporates the boundaries of the Quillou Valley School District. Now, a lot of the staff will probably say, "Well, we have it in consultation through the planning commission with the City of Forests." But that's not what the code says. It talks about the City of Forests, but it says the boundaries of this commission are the Quillou River School District, which is much broader than the City of Forests. I think you would, by doing this, you would address the shortcomings, this update is failing to address such as no net loss and cumulative effect in River 20, or a large portion of River 20. The planning commission doesn't seem to be doing it as a planning commission. So I appeal to your better judgment to go out and ask that a Western Planning Commission be established to address this, if the planning commission is not going to do it. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Respond to the panel. First off, you point out a really good fact with regard to communications on the part of the advisory board. That advisory committee is scheduled to be the eighteenth at 1:30 in this room. The fact that it hasn't been announced anywhere gives something that, you know, it's one of the first issues that that committee needs to actually take a look at. That committee is also going to look at the recommendation that Matt Undelso put forward. And I'll share with you that he had suggested a representative from the Sierra Club and Audubon Society, and there was discussion about a representative from the Sierra Club that went ahead and in the air and said, "Well, also, the recommendation was from Audubon." And I signed an email yesterday, Cindy followed up, extended that invitation. But I made the recommendation, and I'm glad that it was honored by the commissioners. We need to get on with this. And the process of constantly changing or adapting to the composition of the committee has the potential to stall, just like you said. So I'm glad that they agreed, let us get on with this, and it will occur on the eighteenth. But more importantly, there's conversation you'll probably want to listen to, and that is it's the committee's decision if they want to change the composition. It can actually be a pretty interesting conversation, because it's the first test about how well those people are going to get along. On the second issue that I've brought to DCD's attention, my concern that I can't pull the shoreline management plan that's being proposed, and look at a red line comparing that document with what the old document was. And the fact is, there isn't such a red line, because the new plan is a total overhaul. So the alternative that I recommended, I just listened and I heard the alternative that what they're doing is walking through all of the comments, classifying them relative to the new document, so that in theory, you can look at a comment that was made four years ago from a member of the public about whatever it was, and see that the new document addresses that issue in chapter whatever it is. And here is the response. The response may be it's incorporated, the response may be that it's not, we don't have the data. But what I was after is cross-reference, because I wanted to be sure the people that had voiced an opinion were heard. And so I'm happy that that's the approach, but my understanding is that that planning committee, that's a pretty arduous process. And I hope I didn't hear from you confirmation that some of those testimonies have been lost, because I've actually been reading them for, you know, months now, and there are a lot of them to read. And so I'll personally follow up and carry on, but I know that's on our internal... Originally I asked for a red line, there's one that I thought we could possibly see if a person says something that I responded to, and that is what we're going on.
They should have, they usually have workouts, but don't, and do that at the end of the process.
Yeah.
We have on our webpage, on the front page, we have current items. We've discussed the importance of keeping this committee, so I just wondered if the committee's next meeting is on our front webpage as a current item? Because I've been for four usually.
Yeah, there is, I'll make sure.
So let's make sure that the meeting is front and center on our webpage. There's not a webpage set up yet that has done anything.
Right.
But at least it could be a link maybe to the agenda, you know, at the time. We had talked about the importance of keeping this issue, and for Cindy to keep it front and center, and try to keep her minutes, and make sure that it's public, because there's a lot of people that would be...
And that's something that should be on the front page.
I'll make sure that Cindy being new might not have known that's what we do at these meetings, and I'll make sure. Well, it's usually four or five of the hot topics. Last time I checked, it's one of them was so easily...
Yeah, okay, I'll get on, I'll get right on that.
That would be one link, and Trish probably would have...
Oh, I can say, if I may, I asked you to create a page for the Land Trust Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And I have not had, and Cindy has composed the text, I have not had time to put it together. But so we will have a page for it, hopefully I get to it by the end of the week, and how the agenda is and is.
Can we link it to the front, you know, those four or five items on the front page, can we maybe put that, one of those items, right now?
Um, that'd be under the current issue, and just with a link to that.
Yeah. Certain, should be easy. Once it's up and running and everybody is following it, they'll figure out the red line, I'll just...
There's no intent, there's no intent to delay this thing or how to...
And I think it's the board's intent that if the committee wants to expand their membership, we support that, that that's, we've kind of just handed off the start of the committee to them, and they're free to kind of go with as they want from there.
Cindy, I have shared with Mary Ann a concern that you brought up with regard to consultation inside the entire planning area. In fact, I did some research on the issue of the channel migration zones that are in that, and the work that was done at Polan R.C. I've got a CD sitting on my desk, it's very... I've got nothing to do for a couple of days to read it, but there is an issue that I tend to bring to Mary Ellen's attention with regard to, a lot of money was spent in the planning process in the other wires that resulted in information, yeah, that went into the plan. And then I uncovered the fact, there wasn't a lot of money available for wire return. And so there's this abbreviated version. I don't know if that abbreviated version is good enough, but I am concerned, concerned enough that I'm looking at some of the maps, and I'm not sure how to present the question to Mary Ellen yet, but I am concerned that the West End ended up with lesser funding, and it has produced things such as channel migration zones on the Soldok River. I get a thirty-foot bank at my house, you're telling me that that thing's going to move three hundred feet? If it does, it's a whole lot bigger problems than a channel migration zone. So I'm definitely sharing what I gathered with Mary Ann, and I had to do the research on that issue via, is actually the Quillou Tribe and Polan R.C., so I'm on it. And I'm just hopeful that everything I've seen so far is Mary Ellen's group cares. There's no intent to bury it there.
Looking at the West End, if they're willing to have a process in the...
Yeah, well, I'm sure they might run out of time. Okay. I see nothing else, we'll recess in close.
Picture on the end of the Board of Commissioners meeting today. Tell me what you're doing, and I'll put it on, I'll put it on the clown in public eye. Tell me what you're doing.
I'm going to scoot that out.
This is gorgeous. How big is this tree?
To the ceiling and...
So it's twenty-five feet?
Probably.
It is beaut, and it smells so good.
This is the Tuesday work group.
This is the Tuesday volunteers?
Volunteer work group. And these are the folks that go out and clear the trails in the parks and sweep out the fire pits and pull the scotch broom and all that kind of stuff. And a couple of times a year, they get to come in and decorate the tree, and then they get to take the tree down.
Fantastic. It smells luscious.
Yeah.
Oh, that's just beautiful. I'm going to walk around it. I got to get some pictures of this person on the...
We've got like three of them here.
Who's on the...
We've got a couple of them there.
Who's on the ladder? Say hi.
Hi.
Hi, beautiful job.
Don't look too close.
So anybody who wants to see this, I'll tag it at the bottom of the County Commissioners meeting, that was today. So you'll see this video.
All right.
Okay, I'll give you guys a card. Let's get some pic, is there a group picture? Can you all just turn around and wave? Everybody turn around and wave.
Hi.
I'll get you on the video here. This is great, Merry Christmas. Fantastic group. Thank you. You care if I take your baby steps, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Tell us who this is, just first name.
This is Ella.
This is Ella. Sleeping away what? Santa's preparing a beautiful tree. Very good, guys. How long have you, how long have you been working on this today? Since seven this morning?
Nine thirty.
From nine thirty this morning, that's where it passes. And these are the volunteers that...
Three county volunteers.
County volunteers.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Close to the tree.